Oh.
I have a big machine.
Front of her book says Sarah as well.
We like to switch at the last minute and make it challenging for you.
Well, there you go. That's what happens.
Close enough.
I'm gonna call her Ms. Cohen though.
That's fine. Anybody, anybody, nobody tells me, we just, you just get whoever you're supposed to be.
All right. Standing in for her.
No problem.
I hope you flew.
Yes.
If I was here this evening, that makes good, good sense.
Tammy's still a teenager, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we synchronized? Oh. Good evening. I'd like to call this Tuesday, January 17th, 2017 meeting in Middletown City Council order. If you please stand and join me in a moment meditation and the pledge leads to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. King, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bronston.
Here.
Mr. Brohannon.
Here.
Mr. Moon.
Here.
Mr. Picard.
Here.
Mayor Mulligan.
Here. Our first agenda item this evening is a public hearing regarding a zone change case, three dash sixteen, requested by applicant George Long, business manager on behalf of Middletown City Schools requesting approval to rezone the property located at 2717 Yankee Road, Middletown, Ohio, four five zero four two parcel ID Q six five four two zero eight five zero 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 one six, approximately 10.56 acres per Butler County Auditor from D three, medium density dwelling unit to I one, general industrial district. Mr. Atkins?
I two, Your Honor.
I two. It does say I two. Thank you.
This is a previous location of the Oneida Elementary School. It was built in 1953. School had been demolished in 2002. It has been basically a vacant eyesore for both the city and the school district for the last 10 to 12 years. They are asking to change it over to industrial use. Go ahead, please. This is the property location where the star is located on the overhead. Planning Commission has thoroughly reviewed this and recommended approval of the zone change to I two. City staff has also looked it over and they are in agreement that that is a equitable and good use of the property. We will be bringing this back to you for actual passage at the February sixth, seventh.
Seven.
First February meeting, but wanted to get the public hearing out of the way tonight. We do have members of the school district here if you have any questions, and it is up for a public hearing this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from council? All right. Hearing now, I'll declare a public hearing open. Ask if there's anyone to speak in favor of the proposed zone change. Come forward. Anyone to speak in favor of the proposed zone change? Is there anyone to speak in opposition to the proposed zoning change? Anyone to speak in opposition to? All right, hearing done. We'll close the public hearing and move on with the rest of our agenda. Brings us to our citizen comments this evening. I understand we have State Representative Candace Keller here this evening with us. Good evening. If we could get your name and address for the record, please.
Candace Keller, 3430 Central Avenue, Middletown, Ohio.
Good evening.
Good evening. That was fast. Well, thank you so much for inviting me to speak to tonight's Middletown City Council meeting. I'm here honored to address my, my city leaders here in Middletown as we move into this new year. And so for those of you who have not met personally, my name is Candace Keller. I was born and raised in Middletown, specifically Madison Township. My parents came to Middletown, like a lot of other people from Kentucky, in 1952. My mother always told me that when they got to Middletown, everything was green and everybody had a job. Choosing Middletown to, to be raised here was one of the best decisions that my parents ever made for me, and it certainly changed the course of my life and that of my children. My father started a family-owned business here, a trucking company, and he obtained silent bid contracts with the University of Kentucky and the Kentucky Horse Park and provided them with most of their hay and straw. A lot of people don't know that Butler County produces a lot of really superior hay and straw. And so at that time, that's what he did for a living. And I grew up learning, hearing four words all the time, Timothy, alfalfa and clover and straw. Talked about straw a lot. And so we even provided straw and hay to Secretariat and a lot of racehorses, a lot of experimental cattle for the University of Kentucky. My mother worked at Black Clawsen. She was a secretary there and retired from there. I've got two brothers. My older brother is a pastor in Washington, Indiana. My younger brother is a board-certified anesthesiologist, and he graduated from Madison High School, owns an opioid addiction clinic in northern Kentucky. He also serves on the Kentucky Board of Medicine. He is one of only 20 physicians in the state that holds board certification in three areas of medicine and one of them being addiction medicine, and this will be something I focus on at the State House. All of us graduated from Middletown City Schools, and I graduated from my university with a journalism degree. Most recently was with a large law firm in Westchester where I drafted healthcare contracts between physicians and hospitals and physicians and nursing homes. Faith was a big factor in my growing up in Middletown. Our family concentrated on the community, church and family. Growing up in Middletown was one of the most positive things that ever happened to me, and I'm truly a product of the prosperity that we experienced in the 1960s and 70s in this city. And I'm thankful now for our city government, for our law enforcement, the civic leadership that we have here that remains attentive to our original legacy of being the all-American city. In 2007, I became the CEO of one of the largest charitable agencies in several counties, and I now spend my time raising money to provide for the material needs of women with children who come from a culture of poverty, women who are living in crisis. It's a faith-based organization, pro-life and charitable, and we see over 1,800 young women annually. We receive no grants from the city, county, state or federal government because they don't have any money for, for charity a lot of the time. And so I raise about $300,000 a year with the help of this community, the church, local businesses, corporations, as well as a number of generous individuals throughout the state of Ohio and even across the nation. I've been married for 39 years to my husband, who's sitting behind me. We have two sons. Our oldest son owns his own business, and our youngest son works for the Department of Defense. Both of them are married, and we have six grandchildren, all of whom now or will in the future attend Middletown Christian School. I'll be continuing my work as a CEO of my nonprofit agency, and I'll be working there three days a week while I work three days a week at the State House and resting one day a week. My family was taught to serve and love hard work, and that's what I'm going to keep doing. And now I represent 117,000 residents in Ohio's 53rd House District. I was sworn in on November 16th, and immediately, within minutes, went into lame duck session where I voted on nearly 50 bills in less than three days' time. Our last session ended at 4:20 a.m. on Friday, December the 9th. The 53rd House District encompasses four cities, Middletown, Madison, Trenton and Monroe, I'm sorry, and Oxford, as well as three villages, 11 unincorporated communities and 10 civil townships. These are the communities where my work will focus, and my intention is to stay in my district as much as possible and address the needs of our community. My committee assignment has not been given to me as yet. However, the committees I have requested to serve on in Columbus include higher education, health and public utilities. The governor's budget will be delivered to us on January 31st, and we'll spend the first half of this year examining the budget to see where we can best put our money to raise the quality of life in our district. Middletown has a strong Chamber of Commerce, and I have a keen interest in jobs and manufacturing growth, and I have scheduled to meet with business owners and small businesses and large from one end of this district to the other, and we are already booking those appointments into May of this year. I want to let Middletown City Council know that I'm in Columbus serving you. I'm in your corner, and I will fight for you. I ask that you please remain in close contact with me, letting me know the things that are of concern to you and to Middletown and what we can do in Columbus to better serve you. Likewise, I will stay in close contact with our mayor and our city manager, and I'm always available to address whatever needs you may have. I think we're fortunate to have the leadership in Middletown that we have, and I look forward to our growth and what we're going to do in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming down this evening. All right. I've received no other cards this evening for citizen comments. So with that, we can move to city manager reports. Mr. Atkins?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have three items on the agenda tonight for city manager reports. I'm going to exercise a little discretion and flip them around a little bit since most of the people that are here tonight are for the senior levy. We'll move that to the front. Before you tonight is Resolution R. 2017 dash zero three, a resolution that will place on the ballot a levy for the senior citizens. As you recall, at the prior meeting, you passed emergency legislation that authorized me to go to the auditor and get certifications back on what such a levy would bring. That has taken place, which allows us to move forward this evening. This will require emergency passage with four votes tonight to get this on the ballot. Earlier this afternoon, and when you arrived today, there were two pieces of documentation I left at your chair. The first one was a question and answer listing from the Central Connections folks. The second one was a seven-page memo from Charlie Young, the Butler County Administrator, going into some of the changes that have happened in revenues at the county level over the last few years and how they have affected Central Connections. We also have Mr. Landon here tonight. A few times he's been back in a while, but this was tricky enough and fast enough and everything else that Mr. Landon and I both hoped that if there are any questions, we can be available to try to answer them and, and get this so that you're ready to vote later on this evening. With that, is Monica, are you gonna, who's gonna come up tonight and?
I.
Dick, whoever.
We'll take him as a duo.
We'll let the senior citizens come up and.
We'll come up like seniors.
Good evening.
Good evening, Council. Mr. City Manager, thank you again for bringing us here. In reference and respect for your time, since you've had the questions and the answers already to you, it would be redundant to go back and read those. So we would like to.
It may be helpful, Mr. Isroff, to step through those for the, for the public and for those viewing. I mean, we, and we did just get this a little bit ago, so.
Right.
Yeah, don't feel, I think it's good that we have it in writing, but I think it would be good to step through some of the issues that were raised.
We'll go through them and, and, you know, put the hand up and either one of us might will answer. Okay, then, yes, Monica will lead.
Yeah, the first question is, and these were questions that prior to this meeting, I asked city council.
If we could make sure we get you on the microphone there, too.
Okay. Prior to this meeting, I had asked city council, I had emailed them to see if there were any questions or concerns that they had prior to tonight, or anything that they wanted me to address via email or, or a meeting or in tonight's meeting. So one of the big questions was, is it possible to either reduce the term or the millage of the levy without a new resolution or starting over? And so I, we do have an attorney that we're working with, and I called that question to him, and he said, yes, the levy term can be adjusted without a new resolution or starting over. However, the millage can't change without a new resolution or starting over. The second part of that question was, could the city manage the proceeds from the levy through an agreement between the senior center and the city of Middletown? The answer to that question is Central Connections would be in favor of an agreement or a contract between the senior center and the city of Middletown.
Any clarification? In the concern of where were the funds used before, it may not have been clear that our original mortgage was 3.6 million, and the funds went almost exclusively. We had just one small portion for Operation 26,000 over that four-year period, but everything else has gone to reduce those first mortgages down, which is why we're now at the 1.6 million area. And so all those funds have been applied judiciously as, as directed.
While you're there, and I was the one that asked the question about the agreement. We currently have an agreement between the city and the senior center that handles the pass-through of the levy proceeds to them. I think it's relatively generic based on what I heard from Mr. Atkins and Mr. Landon's research. And my thought for this, again, for some of the council to consider, that wouldn't be part of this resolution, but it would allow us, I think, if we do move forward with something like this, will allow us to be a little more specific in terms of how the funds are used, maybe allow for some checkpoints. Once the mortgage is reduced, if there are excess levy proceeds to be received, will allow the council to determine possibly, you know, how those could be used, you know, like any type of tax agreement. There'd be checkpoints, I think, to make sure that things are being spent appropriately, but also if there are other opportunities. We couldn't use this for other, you know, purposes such as paved roads or anything like that, need to go to senior services, but I think it'd allow us to have some, a little better control and oversight ultimately for, for the levy proceeds if that's a concern to council, I think, and that I heard from people in the community, too. So I don't know, somebody else may have had that question, too, but that was one that I asked. I wanted to just go into a little more detail on that.
And while we are doing our due diligence, we thought we'd look around and see what other communities do for senior citizens. And we noticed that in surrounding areas like Mason, Miami'sburg, Franklin, Germantown, almost every one of these cities have a line item expense to the city budget to support senior services. In Mason, Ohio, it runs $170,000. Miami'sburg, they're spending $214,000. So our city is having the senior citizens' concerns being managed by an independent agency, not putting a burden on the city budget itself. And I think that might be something noteworthy because there are other cities in this area, and most cities are spending money towards the seniors to keep, give them the services that we're able to provide. And that's, I think, an important note to them. What's the cost to our citizens? Well, it's less than $30 per 100,000, and that's not an increase. That would, that's, so that's a, we looked into whether we could sell the building, and that's, and most people are most aware of what the real estate situation here in Middletown would be on a building that size. Plus, we need that facility to meet the needs. We have producing 125,000 meals a year, over 14,000 trips a year, with no other agency around to back that up. There would be, all your citizens that are being, using the services, many of them would be neglected and not be able to receive the services we have. Meanwhile, we are staffing. We've done due diligence to reduce our expenses. We've brought them down over $200,000 in the last two years, and while doing that, still maintain a high-quality level of service to our community. We've been very, very astute at trying to get all of our operating expenses in line every place we can. Questions? We need this passed. We need, we need the citizens of the Middletown to have the opportunity to make that decision. That's what we're asking tonight.
Did you skip a little?
I didn't go over every item. You, I mean, I can.
Yeah, maybe if Monica could address the, what's changed in terms of why we're asking for a little bit of question there, maybe.
Yeah, the question, what has changed since 2012 that the senior center is asking for a renewal? The biggest change from our standpoint in 2012 to present was the Butler County Elderly Services Program dollars. The most change occurred in 2015. The Butler County ESP revenue, at that time, you can see the dollar amount of $912,694. In 2015 was down $387,224 and so on. In 2013, revenue from Butler County ESP was about 1.3 and 1.2 in 2014. Right before this meeting, I did receive, earlier last week, the city manager Doug Atkins had asked that I get with Charles Young, who is the Butler County Administrator, and I shared this exact information with him that's on your sheet, and I had not heard anything back. And then prior to this meeting, Larry was so kind to send me this, so I have not had an opportunity to read over the report that they sent. I did look over the summary and the bullet points that are on the summary. The thing, the first bullet point, that happened prior. So I'm not, I can do some research. I'm not sure about, well, I'm sorry, the second bullet point. In 2014, three separate services, Home Care, Homemaker and Companion, were consolidated into one service called Home Care Assistance or HCA. Central Connections was given the opportunity to bid and encouraged to do so. Unfortunately, Central Connections chose not to submit a bid for these services. As a result, they ceased being a provider for Companion and Homemaker in 2015 and 16. That was prior to me. I'm not sure of the circumstances that surrounded that. I'm not sure why we did or discontinued that program because those are reimbursement dollars for us. I know that staff at that time was eliminated, but I don't know, and I can research that and come back. On the second bullet point, in 2012, Central Connections made the decision not to bid to provide home-delivered meals in one of three previously served zones. Again, that was 2012. I'm not sure.
That, that, that zone took us all the way over to Blanchester, Ohio.
Okay.
Which we found not a practical place to apply our, for four houses, I think. Nobody wanted it, and that's why we didn't bid on it either. It was a piece of Warren County that they were trying to get rid of.
Dick, is that the Home Care Assistance Service?
No, that's home-delivered.
Home-delivered meals. Those were, those were additional home-delivered meals they wanted us to make.
So that's, that's the third bullet on the summary.
Third bullet on the.
Yes, the third bullet.
Okay. So that was in Blanchester. Okay.
Yeah, okay. I do recall hearing some of that. And then looking down at the fourth bullet point, Central Connections asserts that they ran out of Title III transportation units in July of this year, and they had to pick up the cost. This is true. Title III funding for transportation is an allocation. COA, Council on Aging, informs providers of their responsibility to manage the units such that if they provide more units, then the provider is allocated. The provider is responsible for the additional cost. That is true. We did run out of units. Yes, we know there is a responsibility, but we don't turn medical visits away. We did set up a fee-based transportation because when I started, we were doing all of transportation, whether it was essential or non-essential. So I believe I spoke to this in an earlier meeting, but we set up a fee-based for non-essential trips. So there is a charge, but there is not a charge for, it's donation by donation for essential trips such as dialysis, doctor's appointments, physical therapy, coming to the center. There is no charge. So yes, we are allocated units by Council on Aging. Our units have increased, but our reimbursement has decreased. So it's a balancing act constantly. And we did pick up that cost. To the last bullet point that ties into that, Central Connections asserts that lifespan care managers are inappropriately referring clients for the title, for Title III transportation. When this issue was raised last month, COA requested a list of clients Central Connections believed should have been covered by the Elderly Services Program. COA did not receive this data and therefore was unable to follow up. I will have to go back and check that out because I had a conversation with Chef Josh Blackmore, who was here in the audience, and he did follow up with COA. We had a conversation, he had a conversation with Hope Must, which we have a very good relationship from Council on Aging, and she said that she would be addressing this. She did not ask us for a list of persons who we were referring to to do an investigation of any kind. So that's the information I have on those bullet points within the short amount of time that I had to get that together.
We got this around 4:15 this afternoon, just for everyone's clarification. This isn't something we've said. We, we just received it late this afternoon.
Yeah.
So I think, did we skip anything else?
If I could.
Please.
Go back to the second question here about city managing these proceeds. I don't want the city managing the proceeds. I mean, is Mr. Atkins going to take on running Central Connections? I don't think that's a very good idea at all. I mean, if the levy passes and the funds are, are theirs, they're theirs to spend. I don't see how you can create a legal relationship between the city and this organization to manage funds which are being generated by a levy, and I'm not in favor of that at all.
I will chime in just more for informational purposes than policy, that Mr. Landon and I also had that concern, both the administrative, but also the execution of this. This agreement we have, and Mr. Landon, if I misstate or you can clarify, feel free to join in, is that this is, levy is designed for senior services. Our agreement basically says, we'll collect this money and give it to you, and you'll use it for senior services. Done. It's not much more complicated than that. If we're going to create something more specific, the question then becomes, who's going to manage it? Who's going to keep track? And what happens if it doesn't happen? All of a sudden now, there, are we figuring out penalties? I don't think we can hold the money. There, there are legal questions that, that we could try to resolve between now and May, but it, it raises some serious concerns as to whether the city wants to get into that type of a relationship. Number one, whether we could, but number two, whether we want to get into that. Mr. Landon, is there anything you would like to add, to clarify or add to that?
The only, excuse me. The only thing I would say is, we, we can make some changes in the agreement to make it more specific as to where the money should be focused, et cetera. But again, I think Doug has touched the critical point, which is simply overseeing that and oversight. And I think Councilmember Picard's point is well-taken. It's just who's going to watch that? Who's going to make sure that these things occur? Write this agreement pretty much any way we think we want to write it, as long as we do what we say we're going to do, which is we collect a tax levy. It is used to facilitate senior services in the city of Middletown. How we do that, we can do in any way we want. The theory has always been that there would be an agreement with what used to be the senior citizens group, now is Central Connections, that the money would pass to them, and they would, they would use those dollars accordingly. Can we control a little bit more of that? Yes. You do create some administrative issues with that.
Can I ask you a question, Les?
Sure.
The terminology here says the funding is for the purpose of providing and maintaining senior citizens' services and/or facilities.
That's true.
What would change? Would you be more definite on facilities and?
I, I think, I think we could if we wanted to. If we really wanted to, we could say, these are the things you can spend the money on. Again, how far into that do we want to get, and how much value do we have to getting into that? That becomes a management problem from our end. The theory here always was the senior center needed money. There was available a mechanism for the city to get money for senior services, to pass that money through to the senior as long as they provided services. I think some very broad services are outlined in our agreement. I think some very broad services are outlined in our agreement as to what they will provide, and then let them do what they need to do. Everybody always knew the money here was fundamentally to pay off that mortgage. That's where we are. The anticipation originally was that a five-year levy would get the mortgage paid. Obviously, that hasn't occurred.
That was not the original proposal.
And, you know, but it was anticipated there would be one levy initially. Some things have changed. We understand that. I think it's a decision the council has to make. And realize, the only decision you're making is do we put this in front of the public and let them vote on it? You're not making the decision it will, it will not happen. You are simply saying, put this in front of the electorate. The electorate will be allowed to vote on it. If they want to pay those extra taxes for that purpose, they can do that. If they don't, they can say no.
Yeah, we understand that. I just wanted to be sure that we were addressing that one question about the city managing the funds.
Yeah.
I mean, there will be no repairs taken out of the money, you know, that...
We have some ability, again, to limit how that money gets used. And keep in mind, that agreement's going to have to come back in front of council. Council's going to have an opportunity to see that agreement, and if they want those sorts of things in it, they need to make sure that we get them there when we bring it back.
Since I raised this, I was not, it was not my intent to necessarily micromanage the whole process or anything like that. But again, to speak globally, to provide some assurances to folks that, as you raise the point, repairs, in theory, could be covered under the current services to seniors.
Yes.
That's a concern of ours, you know? Repaving the parking lot, that's, in theory, could be used for that. If they're replacing a capital item or something like that, a chiller or refrigerator, that's something that could be used out of levy proceeds. My thought is that if we had a process, and it would be a bit more administrative work to do, that they would come to us with a request and detail how that is and what it's to be used for, and then those funds would be released. I mean, I don't know, it'd be overly burdensome, but again, my goal is just to make sure we have some accountability.
Right.
Again, it doesn't need to be overly detailed or complex. I don't think we need to get into a whole lot of that. But my thought was, just to provide some assurances to the public and to the taxpayers that we're trying to be responsible in terms of making sure they're used somewhat appropriately. Again, it's a slippery slope. I don't want to have Doug having to go out there and do building inspections and make sure the roof was repaired or the tar was put down. I mean, we don't have that.
Doug would prefer that as well.
Yeah, but again, I just wonder, and again, that is something to be determined at a later date. We don't need to decide that tonight by any means. We could certainly allow Doug and Les to research that a little bit more, but my point was to raise the issue and raise the question, if we could manage a little bit tighter, to provide some assurances to the public as well as, and I think understands it from this response, that Central Connections is fine with agreement of some sort to provide some of that. But again, we need a balance of the whole, you know, all sides of it. So that was my only point raised in the question, was not to undo work or...
And the short answer to the question is, yes, we have the reasonable ability to exercise some control.
I have a similar question. You know, the city books are public information. Is there any sort of public access that the public would have to have to the accounting of these dollars? Or is that, once it's passed through to the senior center, it's all private?
Basically, basically what happens is, we take the dollars. We then enter a contract with Central Connections that says, you are going to provide these senior services in the community. Here is your money. Like any other vendor that we pay, absent something that would require that to occur, no. They are not subject to public accounting the way public funds otherwise would be.
Now, I would point out, as a nonprofit, their tax, their 990s available for public inspection, which, you know, has a broad description of what they're doing, their financials, things like that, but maybe not quite to the level of the detail we get with our 200-page financial...
Not an open book like...
Right, yeah, exactly.
Like the records are.
Right, but there would be some...
What happens six years, seven years down the road from here? Your mortgage is paid off. Do you have enough income coming in yearly to sustain the facility?
Our projections will be with the mortgage is paid off, with the new activities that we're offering, with the new efficiencies that we're providing, that, you know, again, with the best done, due diligence management, and I would like to just make this observation. I've been on the board six years. I've seen an evolution of higher skilled talents on our board, finance director. Everything has been tightened down. We have a really high-quality board that is overseeing and looking with very close scrutiny at every line item expense. We, with our best ability, do not see any problem with that because we are offering new services, cutting costs, providing, particularly through our catering and the facility that houses 400 people, the only building in town where you can have a meeting that large for a sit-down dinner. We're booked clear into 2018 right now. This is going to be a new revenue stream to help us be able to keep, that, those profits from that go strictly to senior services. There's not, we're not providing anybody with bonuses or anything out of that. That's going to the senior services that we're providing. So the answer to, short answer would be yes.
So you're not going to need to come back before us in...
As we see it now. And six years from now, who knows where I'm going to be?
Ms. Bronson?
Yes, sir. I was presuming that we were going to receive a presentation with overhead cost projections and things like that. And what I see here is answers to questions, so I guess I didn't, maybe we didn't make it more clear that we could see some of those projections that Mr. Bohannon was discussing out in the future. How you would be doing in the future? Were you able to stand on your own two feet? And with the proceeds that you're receiving now from other entities, could you still sustain the building after the mortgage was taken care of?
Yes. I'm sorry, Dora. I was not thinking that that's what this presentation was going to be, but I would be more than happy to get that information to you. I, you know, tonight, as Les has said and others, this is just to put it on the ballot. And so when we get it on the ballot, hopefully, then we will, you know, throw anything and everything out there.
Yeah, I just think it's important for the public to know.
Absolutely.
And we understand what the...
Yeah, yeah, it was the...
...is tonight.
Yes. I'm sorry. I apologize for it.
Ms. Atkins, is there one more year of collection for the current levy that's on?
Jake?
This year, 2016.
They'll receive another disbursement? Okay. So is it safe to assume that you guys will probably, the next disbursement that you get, that'll be paid to the balance of the loan as well?
All of that is going towards the mortgage, yes.
So I guess my only and last question would be, that would bring the loan down to about a million dollars?
No.
No?
One-six.
Into one-six.
Well, it's one-six today, but if you take the 600...
It's one...
No, you're factoring that into the one-six?
Yes.
Yes, at the end of, when the levy money, yes, then it will be one-six.
Okay, so you're factoring that in?
Yes.
So then I guess my only follow-up question would be, you know, if the levy's going to generate 662,000 a year, which is what the auditors say, that's about 48% has not been, you know, we're focusing on the building. Can you give the public a little bit of information on where the rest of the 48% is going to go? Or is that...
I think that goes back to what Mayor Larry was saying, that, you know, having some oversight, that would be a conversation, whether it be through programming or a vehicle sustaining the building, some capital dollars, those types of things that we would use. It would be for senior services.
There's pressure tied constantly. Our services are being asked for more and more because we're facing a growing need. More people are feeding into our, so we have, we have to look at increased expenses in years to come to meet the needs of the people we're servicing because they'll be, we're going from 16% of our population to 20% of our population by the time this is over. And so our expenses will rise, and we need to have some of that in reserve to be able to handle those expenses that are coming. Plus, notwithstanding due diligence for roof, major, all major facility concerns.
And along those lines, that was a question, I think, of the term, if we shorten the term up, essentially, you know, a four-year levy instead of a five-year levy becomes a, you know, it's a 20% reduction and maybe keeps it a little more manageable for what we're looking at. But that's, again, like some of the thoughts we need to decide as we find lots of things.
It's going to be a limited amount of information this evening. I mean, we'll have, we've given you everything that we can and answered everything that we can, but the decision to put it on the ballot's going to be made without financials, without some of those other decisions. You know, if it ends up on the ballot, they can circle back with us and provide those balance sheets and some things like that. Again, it's going to determine whether or not it passes probably in May.
To the mayor's point, if we're going to have those discussions about less years, is that something we have tonight? Or, okay, I see Mr. Landon nodding.
And let me, let me say something. I don't want to throw water on anything here, but let me say this. This piece of legislation to get on the ballot needs to be done now. It, we can't wait till February because February 1 is the magic date to get it to the Board of Elections, to get the resolution to the Board of Elections. My concern with changing the term of the levy is very simply this. This is legislation that was written by council for Central Connections. This is a gentleman, this is what he does for a living. He does election law. Susan and I are pretty smart people. We work pretty hard, but we don't do election law. And the last time we did this, we worked with Don to do this. The city hired Don the last time, and that's why I suggested to them they hire Don again. I am a little jumpy about taking legislation upstairs tonight and trying to rewrite it without making a mistake in this very technical area. We make a single mistake, and their levy ends up not worth the paper it's written on because the resolution has a defect in it. That concerns me a bit. One of the reasons we asked Don to do all the work on this is because my staff simply did not have the time in the very short period that we had to get this ready to do the leg work that would make sure we were doing everything correctly. Be a little jumpy about that. You ask us to do it, we'll do it. We'll do the best we can. But I would caution you that that concerns me a bit.
Fair concern. Any other questions from council? Anything else? Ms. Smith or Mr. Isroff, anything else?
Thank you for the opportunity to come before you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Landon? If not, I'll cut him loose.
I appreciate you coming down this evening.
No problem. Good to see you all. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Your honor, we've been talking about healthcare costs towards the end of last year and had to take a fairly large loan from the general fund to cover our health insurance costs for 2016. We've asked Jim Dustin with NFP, our broker, to come and give us an update on health insurance costs. This will be, again, part of the ongoing information you get this year as to what our options are, things we can do, where we stand, and quarterly updates on where our health and fund stands. We will be bringing to you at the first February meeting the first round of reductions, so Mr. Van Arsdale's salary and some of the other things we had mentioned, this will be at your February 7 meeting for your consideration.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, that's, I want to pass the eye test here. Look at the big screen. Thank you, Mr. Dustin, for coming down.
Thank you for having me. So Doug asked me to present sort of what's going on in the healthcare plan. As you're aware, we've had a couple of tough years. So I'll spend a little bit of time talking about the history of where we're at, some of the challenges we're facing today, talk a little bit about healthcare trends. We did some comparisons against communities here in the area, see how we benchmark, and then talk about the changes that we've established for 2017 and then what we have to do going forward. In terms of the historical perspective, we've been self-funded here for a number of years, predating me, and I've been here probably close to 12. The city has run a self-funded healthcare plan, which means we pay all our own claims, we buy insurance protection around the large catastrophic losses. It's the most cost-efficient way for, in any of your size, to purchase healthcare, particularly given the fact that you buy locally as well. It becomes very important in that mechanism. It became more important when ACA took effect because there were certain tax advantages for self-funded plans that didn't exist for fully insured plans. That said, when we do go out to market, we always look at both fully insured and self-funded. It's the one challenge we have with groups of your size, and that's sort of 300 to 500 range, is volatility. And that's really some of the real challenges that we've had in the last couple of years. We work in a committee format, so you have a healthcare committee that's tasked with making changes. They operate within a budget that the city designs, and the committee's task is to try to stay within that budget. We've been very, very challenged in the last, really, two years, 2015 and 2016, to fall within that budget. 2015, the committee had to make changes to the tune of $450,000 in terms of projected changes, try to stay within the budget in a year where the general fund had to loan the healthcare fund about $750,000. The expected changes at that point in time did not actually come to fruition. 2016 was actually a far worse year. There's some reasons for that, which I'll get into here in a minute, but in 2016, you've had your worst year that I'm aware of. Costs came very close to exceeding $7 million, which was dramatically increased over the last couple of years. From that process, and we saw it early on, we started to look at, what do we need to do to try to change the system, try to get back within a budget that could be met? In addition, we also wanted to try to be able to pay back the general fund in terms of the money that it's, the healthcare fund has been loaned. So real quickly, just in terms of the program that the city manager, myself, and the committee are working on is really a five- to seven-year plan. It will not only pay back the loan funds to the healthcare fund or to the general fund, but also to provide full reserves on the healthcare plan that existed at one time but have eroded over a period of time. And I'll take questions at any time as well.
If you would. You mentioned that in 2015, the committee was charged with making some changes to the tune of $450,000, but then you said the changes weren't made?
No, changes were made. They just didn't, they didn't accomplish the goal that we needed.
Okay.
Unfortunately, healthcare is fairly volatile. We had a very bad year, two years in a row. That's essentially what's happened.
Okay.
Okay. So in terms of the challenges that we see and continue to see, we are in a very limited market for healthcare purposes for the city itself. The few main carriers that you have to choose from are Anthem and United Healthcare. While there are other carriers in the market, they don't have a unit cost position that would allow us to go out and purchase them. They would actually cost us more money. We've also looked at some group purchasing organizations that are down here in southwest Ohio, none of which still maintain a competitive position that would allow us to try to get with a larger organization to group purchase and try to eliminate some of that volatility. That's one of the major challenges. I think the bigger challenge has been, we've got a lot of sick people in the last couple of years with some catastrophic illnesses. That has created a great deal of volatility in terms of the claims expense, and that's really what we're seeing primarily drive the costs today. We've had two back-to-back, very tough years, and that's very hard to come back from, even when you make wide-scale changes. In terms of what's affecting us, we've got large claimants in the system, number 16. To give you an example, you buy stop-loss protection at $125,000 per individual. So we, the city picks up the first $125,000 worth of claims, and then the balance goes for that year to the insurance company. We track everybody at 62,500. That's when they hit our radar and we start tracking their expenses. In 2015, we tracked eight. This year, we tracked 16. Of those 16, four of those occurred in December. So it's been really a pretty tough last quarter. The other thing that we're seeing is, we're also seeing higher facility costs. So in government entities, particularly yours, you buy very locally, and costs have continued to rise at Atrium. We've seen that over and over. When we did the tests against United Healthcare and Anthem, Anthem still presented the best opportunity for lower unit costs, but still getting more expensive year over year. Go back one more. And then one of the biggest challenges we're having is, we have a lot of highly expensive medications in the population. You've seen it in the news. It's a big problem nationally. It's hyper-focused here as well. That's exacerbated by the fact that in the 2016 plan year and prior... That's exacerbated by the fact that in the 2016 plan year and prior, the city had to combine their prescription drug purchasing through Anthem. Anthem doesn't allow groups of your size to carve pharmacy out like some larger organizations can and actually go direct to a purchasing consortium, et cetera. So we were sitting with higher-than-average costs in a contract that wasn't as, as optimal as we would like to see, and that was a challenge. And then finally, we obviously have a fairly aging population. We have limited turnover, which obviously creates higher costs. Next slide, please. This will give you an idea of the challenge. If you can see here, the green line is total cost. The blue line is your medical claims expense, and the purple line is your pharmacy claims expense. You can see in terms of the picture from 2012 to 2016, we've seen a relatively dramatic rise in, in what we're spending. So in 2012, we were spending about $5.3 million. Today, through 2016, we spent just under $6.7 million. We had a couple of down years where we had good claims experience. You saw in 2013 and 14, we had a pretty, pretty levelized spend that was actually down for some changes that we made in 2012. Yes?
Is this mainly tracking with the cost of healthcare that we've seen rise, or is this really just more sick people?
That's a great question. I would tell you that if you look at the internals, and this would be just a year-over-year inflationary expense of what you spend at the hospital, what you spend for physician cost, it's tracking within 1% to 2% of your inflation rate. And inflation, for our purposes today, would be somewhere between 6% and 7%. What you see here is primarily high-cost claims, both for some catastrophically ill folks, and then those folks are also taking some very expensive prescription drug medications. And it's chronic disease. These are things like multiple sclerosis. There are things like diabetes and complications of diabetes and cancer. Again, so the one, the one thing I would point out here, just in terms of, even though the trend line doesn't necessarily show the fact, but if you look at the pharmacy expenses, in 2012, we were spending just, just over $900,000 in pharmacy expenses. We're spending just over $1.6 million today. So that's the one that, that in terms of percentages, had the greatest, greatest concern. Next slide, please. When we looked around the communities, we were asked, not only by the committee, to look at government entities here locally that we see, that we have access to, but also what some of the commercial facilities are. We've looked at AK Steel, what they offer in terms of benefits, but this just gives you kind of a snapshot of what the city is doing relative to Hamilton and Kettering. In terms of lines of coverage, you're all offering medical coverage either with some contribution from employees or with minimal contribution from employees. Everybody's offering dental coverage, vision coverage, most offer life. Some do not offer accidental death and dismemberment. The other coverage is critical in this cancer, voluntary benefits that you may purchase through Aflac, et cetera, short-term, long-term disability, and whether or not there were some type of wellness earn-back in the, in the process. Again, wellness integration is a big factor in healthcare these days, so there are some entities, including City of Middletown, that did have wellness earn-backs in their process. So rewarding people for healthier activities in terms of financial gain that goes back into the healthcare plan. See kind of where you lay out here. When you translate that to, next slide, please. You translate that to kind of what is the city doing in 2016, and I know it's tough to see up here, so I'll maybe look at here. The city offers a menu of benefit designs. Primarily, we've got three, and then the minimum value PPO is what we call the ACA Safe Harbor Plan. This keeps us legal in terms of ACA compliance, but the majority of our folks are located in Plans 1 and 4, which is Police and Fire, and Plan 2, and then we have a low-cost option, Plan 3, that we have probably 40 or so folks taking today. You can see in terms of the benefits, deductibles range anywhere from a single deductible of $700 all the way up to $1,200. And then you, on the family side, you have a deductible that averages somewhere around $1,100 all the way up to $2,100. There's some disparity in terms of kind of a differential between single and family. By and large, it's 90% co-insurance, where the city's essentially paying 90% of that cost, the employees picking up 10% of that cost, up to a maximum out-of-pocket anywhere from, say, $1,050, all the way up to $3,700 on a single, and $1,750 all the way up to $6,900, depending on what plan you choose.
So, Mr. Dustin, that 90-10 you spoke of, is that the total cost? So the employees are bearing, you know, $700,000 over $7 million expense, or is that just, or is that the coverage, the 90-10 coverage?
It's the coverage. So we view cost share in two forms. There's the cost share at the plan level, which would be deductibles, co-insurance, copays. There would also be contributions into the plan. So in general, we see employees picking up somewhere, and it varies on the year, depending on, you know, how good a year, or bad a year you have. It could range anywhere from, say, 11% to probably 16% or 17%. And it is growing every year.
Thank you.
Yep. So this is what happened for the city in 2016. If you look at what's going on here in 2017, next slide. So for the cities of Hamilton and Kettering, we see almost exclusively high deductible health plans, either HSA or HRA-driven, as their, their means of operating. Within the City of Middletown, we offer primarily two PPOs, which are older style, and then we have the one high deductible plan that's an HRA in 2016, and that's been modified for 2017. I think the biggest differences you'll see here is that the City of Hamilton really is purely just straight HSA with no contributions in, by the city into that plan. Once they reach those deductibles, they're covered at 100%, and then they have some copays after the fact. It may total up to that max out-of-pocket at the bottom that you see. But by and large, their max out-of-pockets are $2,600 and $5,500 for an individual or a family. When you move over to City of Kettering, they have a strategy more similar to what the city offers here, where they have three plans. Their Safe Harbor Plan is the Bronze Plan, the HDHP. The majority of their folks are in the Platinum Plan, and then they've got a small number of folks in the Silver Plan. They've just recently added contributions into their program. They've reduced what was actually fully 100% coverage because they contributed fully to the HSA up until last year, but they had a fairly rich benefit. Again, just kind of what's happening locally in, in terms of where we sit. So what are, yes?
Does this indicate that the deductibles in the Hamilton and Kettering are twice what they are in Middletown?
They are. I would caution you, though, if you look at the Platinum Plan for the City of Kettering, you'll see that the city actually contributes to the HSA on behalf of the employees, and it actually cuts that deductible down to $700 for an individual and $1,400 for a family. If you look at 2015, they actually funded the entire thing.
And Hamilton only has the one plan?
Correct.
For unions and non-unions?
Yep.
But Hamilton is twice as much as ours, the deductible?
Ah, yes. Correct.
Okay.
So I would say we sit, you know, in terms of where we rank relative to communities, and again, these are two communities on sort of opposite ends of the spectrum, but I think you're sitting right in the probably top quartile of benefits offered. This was in 2016. Okay? So in terms of what happened in 2017, and I'll explain it in the next slide, give you some sense of it. We've added a new program, and I'll explain what these changes all mean in terms of dollars and cents. We did, on the far side, offer, we now offer a straight HSA option for employees with a deductible of $2,600 for a single and $5,200 for a family. Everything is covered by that individual if they choose this plan, up until they hit that deductible, and then it's covered at 90% with a maximum out of their pocket of $6,500 for a single, $13,100 for a family. You can see, just in general, there are some major changes to this plan design in terms of requirements to get back within the budget that the city has set. Some of the key ones that I'll point out, we did create greater disparity between the single and the family deductible. So now in the Package 12, which is the old Police and Fire Plan, you've got a $750 deductible, deductible for a single, $1,500 for a family versus $1,100 in the past. We've got higher out-of-pockets of $2,000, $4,000, where they used to be $1,000. We've got higher copays for physician and specialist. We've also raised the emergency room deductibles. More importantly, we've raised the copay structures on the pharmacy, and we've added a fourth tier for specialty medications that charges 50% of the cost, up to a max of $100 per script. Questions on just the benefit designs themselves? Okay, so next slide, I'll tell you kind of what it all means. So as we saw in 2016, we realized pretty early on it was going to be a tough year. We worked with the committee over a long stretch of time and numerous, numerous iterations of changes, but essentially, when we did the projections for 2017, we needed to get to about $1 million worth of savings out of the committee changes in order to try to fit within the budget that was set for 2017. So what we did through that process, and I'll explain in detail what it means, but essentially, we made changes across really all the avenues that we have. That would be benefit changes, contribution changes, changes in the way the plan operates. In terms of these changes, it's also important to know that not all of these changes are immediate. Because we run a self-funded plan, there is some lag time to when changes actually catch up and you can see them. So for instance, pharmacy changes are immediate. Once we make a copay change, pharmacy claim's complete. When somebody goes to the pharmacy, that, that cost is recognized immediately. Not so on the medical side. So when we change deductibles and co-insurance, all that changes for the member, we're really paying last year's claims in this first quarter of this year. So any claims incurred, say, in October, November, December, will all be paid out probably in January and February. So all of these changes for medical will start to be really realized, call it in March and April of this year. The other things that we see that are immediate are obviously contributions, because contributions went up dramatically as well. So those are immediate dollars back into the plan. The other main change, and I think this is probably one of the most critical in terms of the long-term performance of the plan, was we were able to create a way for the city to access a purchasing cooperative for pharmaceuticals. And that was done through an intergovernmental agreement with Lake County in northeast Ohio. Lake County is a large aggregate purchaser of healthcare. They allow their political subdivisions to purchase from them, and they currently offer Anthem as a self-funded plan, and they, they use Caremark as their prescription drug vendor through the Health Action Council, which is a large, hundreds of millions of dollars group purchasing cooperative. By creating an intergovernmental agreement, Lake County has allowed Middletown to essentially sort of piggyback off of its purchasing efforts. So the city will remain self-funded. They'll continue to use Anthem for medical, but we're accessing Lake County's prescription drug program, which we believe to be substantially better than what you had before. This is a contractual change, so it really affects ultimately the city because the cost of those drugs will be less. Because the city picks up the majority of that cost, it should benefit to the tune of, we believe, at least 20%. Could be as high as 25. That change unfortunately took a little bit longer than we anticipated just because of everything that had to get done in terms of committee voting, et cetera, to be able to communicate those changes and what we need in terms of ACA requirements in order to communicate it. Those changes will actually affect in February. And alongside of that, obviously, we made major changes to the medical and prescription drug program. The one thing that was fairly divisive, we did eliminate the wellness program. We were in a situation this year, a million-plus dollars represented about 22%, 23% of the overall medical claims costs or the overall cost of the plan. So we were looking for any avenue where we could get immediate savings. The wellness program was very popular, and there is a want and a need, I think, to bring it back in another fashion, either when the city becomes more stable in terms of its cost structure for healthcare, or we can come up with a less expensive alternative. So that will be the goal there, but we did pull that out. The other major change that we made was that we instituted spousal waiver for new hires after 1-1. So spousal waiver is a strategy that you can use to reduce cost. It basically says that if I, if I as an employee have a spouse that works full-time at some other employer, that they actually have to take that coverage if it's offered to them. That actually is a cost-reduction mechanism, so we're actually covering less people. We expect that over time, this will have significant impact to the way the plan operates. As people retire, as people get hired, they will be subject to this effective after 1-1. We expect these changes to, if you could go to the next slide. We expect these changes to project about a million-plus in terms of savings in 2017. To give you some sense of how that breaks down, the plan changes themselves. These would be the deductible changes, the copay changes, all that, that stuff represents about $313,000 in annual savings. The prescription drug change, this is purely just the contractual change, not the copay changes. We think it's worth about $250,000 to $300,000 on an optimistic basis. We did also change the dental program. So in the past, the city paid the full cost of the dental program. We've actually changed that to be, the city will pay for a base dental plan, and everyone else that wants a higher dental benefit can buy up to that cost. We were able to save about $168,000. That's immediate saving. We did eliminate the, the wellness program, and I said, that saves about $52,000 a year. The spousal waiver, the $50,000, we had to give some kind of credit. It was a future credit in terms of the five-year plan and strategy. That represents about $50,000. We do expect that that will gather steam over time. If you look at what spouses cost in terms of the plan, they represent expenses that are roughly about 20% more expensive on average than our, than our employees. And then we also added the HSA option. We don't today have a value for that. As more people take it, it should also have an impact and lower the cost structure. And then we added some ways for employees to be able to sort of pick up some of the extra costs through voluntary benefits. That would be the addition of the hospital indemnity program, and then we changed the work site vendor to reduce costs so that there was some offset to that. That gives us about $1 million worth of savings. We're hopeful that that will have some major impact, but I will tell you, it's been tough. The last quarter in particular, with the four large claimants coming through, was not pleasant, wasn't pleasant to see it, wasn't pleasant to communicate it, but we are certainly anticipating hopefully better times. And, and history would show us that there probably are better times around the corner. Questions?
You said we had four large claims in December, but the maximum of the claims is like $125,000, right?
Right.
So $500,000 worth of claims in December. For the year, we were a million and a half over what we thought we were going to be? I mean, it's, I realize we're four in December, but it was increasing all the way along.
Yes. No question.
And then looking at this, yeah, increased employee contributions of $201,000. Did that apply to all of our employees, or we have contracts that are a problem?
We, go ahead. It does imply, correct me if I'm wrong, to all of our employees, but there are caps written into the collective bargaining agreements, and we're approaching this. And so again, lots of moving pieces in this that... Yeah. We've got this piece going, we've got the things that we've talked about in December, we've got collective bargaining agreements that are going to at least initially cause us some, some ceilings that we're going to hit. And the question is, you know, this is pretty straightforward stuff. This equation has to balance. And so if the caps can't move, if things can't change, it's going to come out of someplace else, and it isn't going to be out of capital, I can tell you that, because that's not what I believe in, and that's not what I've told you. It's going to come out of employee cost some other place. We have to delay hires, we have to, you know, go into other modes. That's fine, but this is an equation that has to balance, and if we, you know, if the claims can...
And if we, you know, if the claims continue, uh, then we'll have to find other ways to, uh, in, in our personnel cost, to, to make the equation balance. Yeah, there are, there are a lot of moving pieces.
Yeah, and I would to expand on that. We did take employee contributions essentially all the way to the police and fire caps. Um, so the, the main concern we have with going beyond the caps is it, it doesn't affect the entire population. Once we bump up against those caps, then essentially we're forcing, you know, some costs back to one segment of the population. Given the way you're structured today in terms of this committee format, I think the committee's been very successful at, at adapting change. I'm not saying that they always like it, uh, but I think they recognize the need for it. Certainly, they see it, and they have to communicate it. But unless you've got a unified committee to fracture the healthcare plan and then start to force more costs into a given employee population that doesn't have a bargain contract, it'd make any sense. So we're at that level at this point in terms of contributions. Uh, in this next five-year iteration of these plans, we are going to set out, uh, from the city manager's perspective, a reasonable budget for the city, um, and then also tie that to what are changes that the committee needs to attempt to make, uh, and needs to be prepared to make in order to try to fit within that. And they've got to pay back, they know they have to pay back the money, their conscience into that. Uh, and I think they also recognize the need for a reserved plan. Um, we have had reserves in the past. They've, um, you know, be for, for want of a better discussion, they've been eroded because of plan expenses, et cetera. But with those reserves, uh, and the ability to kind of manage that, it will even out some of this volatility. But it's going to take some, some work and some time.
What's that $400,000 claim coming? The claim with Anthem?
The disputed claim.
Yeah, disputed claim was actually, it's not, so it's, it's a little more complicated than an Anthem claim. So, uh, the claim was actually approved, uh, as of last Friday. Uh, the claim is actually paid by Voya, who's your stop-loss provider. Um, the, the real issue, and it's a fairly complicated one, involved, uh, the Anthem medical director who made a call to approve it, what is considered a, uh, an experimental medication treatment. The medication's not experimental, but the treatment, the usage of the medication to treat it is experimental, classified. Uh, they made that decision without a lot of input from the city, in fact, no input from the city. So the stop-loss provider, looking at their contract, said, "This is an experimental treatment." So we were able to get it covered. Uh, it should come back to the city, uh, whatever extent that, that accounting becomes, sometime in the next week to 10 days.
Other questions? How can we have a $400,000 claim if we're only responsible for $125,000?
It's not just a four, it's, this is fairly complicated, but it extends over a couple of periods. So, and it's not just tied to, um, the prescription drug usage. So this individual had a large number of claims for a number of things. Some of it was paid by the stop-loss provider because it was appropriate. Some of it was tied to the medication treatment, which had to get approved.
Regarding some of the industry trends, um, I, I thought the spousal waiver for existing employees was a little more prevalent out in the industry. Is, is that the case, or am I?
Depends who you ask. I, I think in terms of government, it's still, uh, I would still call it cutting-edge, I guess. Uh, if you look at the private sector, it's absolute, um, it's the norm. Most large employers, if they can not cover spouses, they're looking not to cover spouses. They're charging them more. But again, it, it controls costs, there's no question about it.
And then on the, um, and we touched on the caps that were tied up against, but, uh, industry-wide, or, I mean, is there a range for what the employee contribution, the total employee cost that's borne, is?
Looking at, if you're looking at the SERB report, and, and again, I, I would, while the SERB report gets a lot of good data, I think the challenge with the SERB report is it doesn't really break down the geography of Ohio pretty well. If you go northern Ohio, it's very low. Contributions are still very small. Uh, down in southern Ohio, once you get below Columbus, they, they start to rise. Uh, like I said, I think you're right in the average, in terms of where you sit today. Um, I would say in 2017, you're edging up on that, so your employees are probably starting to pick up more of the cost of that plan. And you have to measure it with what are the benefits that they're receiving as well.
If the talk is down the road, uh, opening up borders, state borders for insurance companies and stuff, is that something that could benefit us down the road, where we could look at other insurance companies across the country?
Sure hope so. I mean, there are a number of carriers in the state of Ohio. The biggest challenge we see is this is a two-carrier town. It's Anthem and United Healthcare, and it's really broken down geographically by Cincinnati and Dayton. You sit right in the middle, Anthem is the provider of choice here. I'd like it to be someone else, but it is what it is. Um, they have the majority of the population covered here in terms of both commercially, uh, and through the public sector. Um, and they have the best unit cost differential. It's not even close. Um, if it was close and we could make a, a good argument that there'd be greater competition between even Anthem and United Healthcare, it would benefit you. To the extent that new carriers are brought into the market, if there are changes in, at the federal level, it can only help you.
I, I just have one last question. Um, and you touched on it with the HSA option, uh, with maybe some of the comparable cities we have, but what kind of, um, experience have you seen in terms of the savings there? If you incent the HSA participation, what like Kettering's doing, does that move this number a little bit to get more folks on it and, um, provide an incentive?
So I, I would say, you know, Kettering, we've looked at Kettering and been involved with their healthcare plan on and off, probably seven or eight years. Um, they've had their ups and downs in terms of cost. Uh, I don't think, well, I would say this, I think HSAs and consumer-directed model changes behavior. Uh, that's a longer-term cost savings than it is shorter-cost savings. The challenge you have when you look at your population, what is the impact of an HSA? Is it going to save 15% or 20%? Here, probably not today. Because when you look at the majority of your costs, these are people who are catastrophically ill. They're, they're going to hit their max out-of-pockets, and you're going to pick it up anyway.
Is the $150,000 stopgap, is that a set, is that set as a state level?
No, it, it fluctuates. Um, you've, I think, been as low as $100,000. You're sitting at $125,000 today. Uh, it's appropriate for your group size. You could go higher, um, but I think, given the experience that you've had, I would say $125,000 is where you want to be, because I think your loss ratio this year is probably about 600%, um, which isn't good. I think, again, you're in a, you're in a group pool with Voya, so you've got some, some sort of, um, you know, I would say just balancing effect with some other large organizations. So it hasn't been terribly, uh, bad for you in terms of those types of increases, where we've had to leverage up the, the level of the stop-loss or the cost. But it's getting tough. Um, you know, having a loss ratio like that is not an easy sell, unfortunately for anyone, so.
Anything else, Mr. Dustin?
So hopefully we got better.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate the update.
We'll continue to talk about this, we'll continue to provide information to council, and you'll see some more stuff at the February meeting to start on some of those other costs. A lot of work to be done to, to, and put that back together in a, in a healthy way. Uh, last thing we have on my agenda tonight is, uh, Mallory Greenham, with Downtown Middletown, Inc., is going to go over the final draft of the new downtown master plan.
Good evening, Ms. Greenham.
Hello, thank you for having me. I promised to bring some excitement.
Healthcare and, uh, weren't exciting enough?
Our future is so bright, you're going to need shades. That's our new motto. So I am here tonight, before we get into the, the actual presentation of the downtown master plan, I wanted to give you just a brief overview of how we got here today. So this has probably been about a year and a half in the making. Again, the short version of the story is that a group like ours, Downtown Middletown, Inc., that is laser-focused on revitalization and historic preservation in downtown Middletown. Every year we do strategic planning, and we come up with goals and objectives as an organization, as do other organizations in town. What we quickly realized is that we don't really know what the vision was for downtown Middletown. We had an old strategic plan to refer, refer to that was done basically back in 2009, when the high-speed rail was coming in. But there were some bigger questions coming about, like what to do with our lamp posts, our trash cans, our infrastructure improvements. Do we do banners? Where do we want to see infill development? How do we connect the riverfront? And these are all questions that organizations like ours could help implement or work towards through public and private partnerships, but we never felt comfortable being the ones to set that vision for the community. So we decided, um, without knowing who, what, or how we would pay for it, to go after figuring out how to get a downtown master plan created sooner rather than later in downtown Middletown. So it started off with, again, with Downtown Middletown, Inc., bringing in a few different master planners to present to the community. At that time, the group that they were presenting to was about 50 to 60, give or take for each presentation, community members, um, that weren't just downtown-related, people who had, um, were stakeholders in downtown or just had an interest in its future. Um, after each presentation from these planners, so the three were Arnett Muldoon Associates out of Greenville, South Carolina, OHM out of Columbus, and MKSK out of Columbus, the group rated them, gave a survey response, and at the end of all three, the collective group, uh, chose OHM, who is here with us tonight, and you'll hear from him in just a second. After we decided the who, uh, we needed to figure out the how. Um, the city of Middletown, it was not on their radar to do a master plan in this year, but, uh, we came to them and said, "Hey, if you provided matching funds for this grant, and we went out and found the rest, um, would this be something that you supported?" And, uh, they did. You guys, thank you very much, gave us the match. And then we had, um, our organization did a lot of the administration, and we had some money invested, but we also had investments from the Middletown Community Foundation and the Middletown Visitors Bureau. So it really was a collaborative effort to get this done. Um, so I'm going to get out of the way, because I know it's going long. Uh, if you have any questions, feel free to ask now, interrupt Justin, although maybe you don't want to interrupt Justin. Um, well, I'm going to stick around after if you have questions as well. So you all have an actual hard copy with you of the draft. It's not final until we hear from you and get input from the public. He'll go into it a little bit. We also have multiple community meetings during this plan, big ideas. We surveyed the public. I really feel the difference i- in this plan and maybe other plans is the amount of community involvement and organizations that help make this happen. Um, what we are asking for, not tonight, but in the future, is the hopeful adoption of this plan as a working document for the city of Middletown. We feel that it is important. And from the DMI Board of Directors and myself, we promise to do our best to help complete. We have a lot of assignments for ourselves in this plan as well. We're not giving it to you and say, "Hey, implement this." Um, we're ready to, to be all hands on deck, to do what we can to help make it happen. And, you know, all joking aside, we, we might be a very squeaky wheel as well, in making sure that as much of this plan gets implemented as possible, so that it's not another, uh, plan that sits on a shelf somewhere. We know that's a big concern, and we definitely don't want to see that happen. So, I'm going to get out of the way. Again, I'd like to welcome Justin Robbins from OHM.
I appreciate the introduction, and I appreciate the, uh, opportunity to come and talk to council and, uh, mayor, vice mayor, and the city manager. Uh, I believe I dropped, I'm going to say, eight of these off. Is there a member that doesn't have one of these copies of the plan? Well, today I have for you a very, very lengthy presentation. Um, it's going to take a really long time, and I'm just going to kind of go through it. All joking aside, I'll, I'll try and, uh, be respectful of your all's time. Uh, what I want to do today is talk about the overall process. Talk about what it is we're trying to get out of this plan, hopefully ways that this city and the downtown can move forward, uh, some specific projects, how the plan is formatted, and just give a real high-level understanding of what the process was and, and what the deliverable is. Throughout any time of the presentation, you can feel free to interrupt me. Seeing how much we had prior to this and, and slimming this down, I'm going to breeze through a couple of slides. So don't think that I'm trying to, um, not hit on every aspect of it, but again, just trying to be mindful. So who am I? Again, my name is Justin Robbins with the OHM Advisors. As a firm, we are a, a group of architecture, architects, engineers, and planners. We number about 450 people, and our main design offices are out of Columbus. And as Mallory said, we were part of a, uh, competitive bid process with, uh, one of our competitors and another one that I'm not too familiar with. That day was actually kind of funny, because we came down, and I was with my colleague, and he's like, "What are we walking into?" And I'm like, "You know, I don't really know." But we prepared, we, we got everything as, as best as we could, and we walked in, and there's a room of 50 people, like, wow, this is impressive. This is actually a, a community-driven process, and we try to keep that throughout the entire planning process as well. Uh, a list of our offices, you can see, we, we do a lot of work in, uh, southeast Michigan and, and all around Ohio as well. One thing I want to touch base on is understanding the context of downtown Middletown. And the situation that you guys have is not particular to this community. Um, you had a situation where downtowns in Ohio, we work in a lot of downtowns, we work in a lot of, uh, Main Street communities, they all face kind of the same problems. There's, there's differences in those problems and how they flesh out. But in general, you had a development pattern within this state and within basically a very long time in a lot of different communities that you would recognize as a city. And over the course of probably the past 70 years, we've gotten away from that. And in large part is due to the automobile. So, an area like downtown Middletown was originally created without cars in mind, right? This is a place where people lived close, they could walk to. The infrastructure of the city was not based around the car. One thing that you'll find is that cars, and I don't want to say are the enemy of a downtown, but you have to balance access and ease of access with the area and the district that you're creating. If you have a place that accommodates cars, and that's it, then all of a sudden, you don't have a historic downtown. You have a strip mall, basically. So you can see, over the course of the years, this is what happens. People tend to move away, give them an option, and they'll, they'll try and buy as much property as they can. And a lot of the downtowns that you have in Ohio are now in competition with places like this, with malls. Uh, they're in competition with different housing options that you get on the outskirts, Greenfield Development or Greenfield Development. So in a lot of situations, you take a look, and, and this is, again, not just Middletown. You could have your historic core, and you basically have a donut of parking all the way around it, and then you have some housing that's within a, a decent proximity, and then most people are outside of that area. A lot of this corresponds to transportation. So in, in the course of how these towns developed, you might have a town that was there because of the river, or because of a canal, or because of a railroad, or because of a freeway. So one of the issues that you have is that, right now, your major transportation, uh, corridor is fairly far away from your downtown. Now, that's not to say that all is lost. There's a lot of reasons that people want to come to a place like this. And it's a place that's not going to compete on the same level as, let's say, a strip mall in terms of ease or convenience. Where it is going to compete is, uh, kind of tugging at the heartstrings a little bit. It's going to compete in terms of entertainment and restaurants, and the small little shops, the mom-and-pop shops, the places that, uh, the folks in your community can, can start a business. And you have the opportunity to actually walk around and experience an active urban area. And that's where places like that are going to win, and they're going to win every time over the strip mall. So why plan for downtown? Talk about these as, as being important, but why are they important? So downtown acts as kind of the barometer for your community. If you walk into a place, and if you were to ask, my guess is, the entire population of the city, and put a dot map, and this is one of the things that we planners like to do, is have a big map and people put dots on and say, "Where is it we should focus on?" I can almost guarantee you that probably 75% of those dots would focus on downtown Middletown. And the reason for that is, is it connects people. It's one of those places that if somebody visits Middletown from outside, the place that they're going to bring them is going to be downtown. It's not going to be necessarily the strip mall, because really, that could be anywhere. This is representative of your community, and it's representative of who you are as a society in a sense. Downtown is the places that small businesses and local business can get started. Uh, it's the place where people connect to the community, past and future. Uh, so again, you have your civic areas, you have, uh, an area that was built, a district that was built 100 years ago, 150 years ago. Well, that's pretty neat. You can come here and you can experience almost the same thing that maybe your ancestors did. And hopefully, 100 years in the future, your grandkids, your great-grandkids. So, in short, it's a place out of other places across the region where people can feel part of the community, past, present, and future. It's both authentic and permanent, and the successes that you will have today will be enjoyed by generations to come. So that's, that's my little spiel on downtowns, and I think it's important to kind of set that stage as to why we're even talking about this and why a plan like this is important. So a project overview, uh, the goal was to develop a plan that's rooted in the needs of the community, that can be used by multiple organizations to further the vision of downtown. For a planner, this is actually kind of difficult, because we have to balance and give enough things for people to do. So we have the city, we have DMI, we have the Visitors Bureau, uh, we have all the organizations that are active in the community, the CIC, the private sector. What this plan is going to boil down to is communication and coordination. What are the projects that we can really push forward as a community and make sure that they're furthering where we want to go in this downtown? And then we're going to select exactly what pieces and parts that people can be involved in. So the project understanding, I'm going to just flip through these. So the project understanding, I'm going to just flip through these. For the city, how to use the plan, what do you want to get out of it? So some basic understandings. So identifies areas for new public sector investment, illustrates the type and mix of future land uses, communicates a market opportunity, guide for future land use decisions and code decisions, and then opportunities for all these groups to work together. I want to have a document that your economic development team can go out and sell these projects and these properties to the private sector, and then give those folks a way to buy into those projects and the buying of the community as well. So for the private sector, identifies areas where additional density or intensity might be allowed, helps with site search efforts, sets the expectation, assists in site selection, and then helps them understand the carrying capacity. One of the things, and we work with a market analyst named Ken Dantor, who kind of serendipitously was working on a project with the city at the same time, so we had him come in and speak to one of the meetings, and what he always says, he goes, developers are lazy. He goes, the most work that you can do for them upfront, the better chance that you're going to have in attracting them. The better you can set the expectation for what they're allowed to do, the better outcome you're going to have. So it's really about that communication and coordination with the development community. This plan is not meant to be done by any one entity, and the city of Middletown, the government of Middletown, it's impossible for you guys to do all the things that we're outlining in this. But what we want to do is to try and coordinate your efforts with those of the private sector to make sure that they can come in and start doing these projects that really advance the vision of the community. A quick note, and I'll let you guys read this. This is not a one-stop solution. This plan is not going to solve all of your problems. This is a start. This gives you direction, this sets the compass for where you want to go. It's going to be hard. It's going to be a lot of work, and it's going to be probably a lot of arguments, back and forth, money to be spent. So again, this is the starting point. This is the diving board, and hopefully, moving into the future, it's something that can really guide that investment and those decisions that this group is going to have to make. So the format of the plan, how we really set this up. We have the introduction. The context is getting a sense of the existing conditions, what it is in the market that's happening, and then what is the community is telling us. So this really gives us the platform and the framework for understanding where it is we need to move. This sets the goal. This tells us, this is where we want to go. The rest of the document really tells us how we're going to get there. After that, we have a vision, so it's a statement that kind of encapsulates everything we want to do and where we want to go. Catalyst projects, specific things, pretty pictures, things that people can buy into and really understand what it is we're talking about when we have our plan framework. And then the policy framework. So grow, attract, move, and live. You're probably going to hear that a little bit throughout the presentation, but this is a way for us to understand exactly what items need to be addressed as we move forward in the downtown. And then we have a development toolkit. So this outlines all of the items that are available from the economic development side, different financing mechanisms and funding mechanisms that they can use to get some of these projects done. So any questions on the format so far? None? Okay. So the downtown plan, as I mentioned, the basis of the plan is existing conditions, market analysis, public input. This really frames where we want to go. It helps us make informed decisions, and it really creates the springboard for moving The market study, as I mentioned, it was great, because Dantor was already doing the studies, so we just kind of piggybacked along to what he was already saying. The study itself was based primarily on housing, and the findings that we have are important, because to the extent that we want to get people downtown, well, the quickest and easiest way is to let them live downtown. What that means is a number of different housing options that you're going to have downtown. Dantor likes to call it full-spectrum housing. So it's basically, somebody in Middletown could be born here and live their entire life out within Middletown, moving houses based on their, the point in their life. So right now, there's an opportunity, I think, to add some additional housing downtown, add some energy to the streets, and try to infill some of the areas that, right now, I would say are not being used to their highest and best use. We took a look, we took a walking tour as to what the current state of the, let's say, urban condition is. This goes anywhere from storefronts and improvements all the way down to the streetlights and some of the street furniture, and you'll see how these can come up in the future recommendations for the plan. So a summary of the public input, and we have some fun pictures of those, and I see a lot of faces in the audience and even on council that were at these public meetings and even part of the steering committee, but we had two public meetings, we had a task, or, I'm sorry, one public meeting, two task force meetings, and online engagement, and that was really used to set the tone of where we want to go. Now, that's not the entirety of all the public engagement pieces that we had, but that's really the basis of where we're making these decisions on what we're going to explain today. There's that good-looking guy right there next to the door, and this is the public meeting that we had, the first public meeting. We had a lot of interns come down and help out, which was a lot of fun. We try and have as many interactive activities as possible to try and get people involved in thinking about where it is they want to go with the downtown, with the future of the downtown, and generate kind of as many ideas as possible. There's the big map on the wall. People were asked to, we called it the Rosen Thorn for this. Green and red dots show areas of, let's say, complete redevelopment, and there is for kind of some tweaks. What's working well, what's not working well. So with that, with the results, some of the big ideas, the riverfront. You guys have a fantastic riverfront. It's an asset to this community, and it's something that should be leveraged, both in terms of programming and development. A lot of people saw the riverfront as a place that's kind of a no-brainer for development in some respects. There are some issues with it, oh, excuse me, but I think moving forward is something that should be taken a really close look at. Economic development, obviously. I think any community, you could put economic development, and that'll be probably number one. Streetscape, and then historic preservation. Those, again, are not the entirety of what was taken from the public, but in general, those are some of the common themes that we heard. This is an example of the dot map, so the big one that was hung on the wall, and you can see the area that's to, I think it's called River Street or Water Street? I always get the name wrong. Water, thank you. Along the river, a lot of people saw that as both an asset and opportunity for future development, and then basically the intersection of Broad and Central as well. So the vision is something that we take, everything that we heard from the public and what we know about the community, and try and craft into a meaningful statement. And the way this works is it's basically a hierarchy. So we're going to have actions, and then we have objectives, and then we have goals, and then we have the vision statement. The vision statement is the really kind of top echelon piece. It's a flowery statement that really describes where it is we want to go. But downtown Middletown is the place where our past, present, and future come together to represent the best of who we are and the best of what we can do. Again, trying to understand it in this timeline. We're basically sitting here right now, in the course of, hopefully, all of this lived to a hundred years, if our health care is good, and saving this for the next generations to come. Some of the key points I want to talk about, so I'm just going to go through these really quick. Live well. What those objectives are, what those principles are, are to strengthen the public spaces within downtown, promote new downtown housing, and rehab existing upper-story spaces in a residential and office. To move safely is to establish safe bicycle connections, ensure pedestrian comfort and safety, and then improve navigation into and within downtown. We go to attract strategically. Make downtown Middletown a unique event destination. You guys have a lot of really great events here, and it's something that should just be communicated to the rest of probably the region. Enhance gateways into the downtown district. Market Middletown's location to the larger region, and promote local businesses within downtown. As far as grow smart, leverage the riverfront for new development. Promote new, high-quality development. Protect the historic character of the architecture and the landmarks, and then promote the establishment of a downtown hotel. If you were to ask me what this plan is all about, these items right here are a good outline of what it's saying, what it's recommending. We included a development intent, and this is outlining kind of the character as things move forward of just some basic guidelines of what you should do when developers come to the door. So bring buildings close to the street, helps form the public realm. Promote pedestrian activity, again, pretty common sense. Attract more residents within walking distance of downtown, provide that basis support. Complement the existing urban development pattern, and then minimize the negative impacts of parking. I'm going to hammer around parking a lot, I tend to do that, but if you have parking in front of a building, and you have it in your historic downtown, you no longer have a downtown. You have a strip mall. And to the extent that you want to maintain the urban fabric that you have here, you need to make sure that the parking impact is minimized to the best extent possible. An overview of some of the project areas, and I'll just go into the projects themselves. You guys might have some questions on these, and again, interrupt me at any time. These are available in the document as well under projects, but I'll try and be brief. So this is the development site that was identified by the community, and this is a mixed-use development that shows how, again, you can apply those development principles, bring buildings close to the street, have parking minimized on the inside, and offer a mixture of uses, and hopefully, use to the best extent possible the assets that you have here in terms of either A, a restored canal, or just a beautiful landscaped area that runs through the site, and the river itself. Lot of really good potential in the views from the river. Adding housing, trying to connect Central Avenue to the building that we're in right now. Right now, it's a huge disconnect between the central and the civic node. All else being equal, it'd be great to have something that really connects, not only in terms of roadway, but in general, people tend to like to walk past buildings, not parking lots. So we're trying to infill some of the vacant areas within the city by housing. Again, providing that connection and then providing that basis support for people that are living in downtown. One thing I do want to mention is this building product right here, the one that we have shown. This is a type of, I would say, three-story townhome. Townhomes are really nice for a place like this, just because you can have kind of smaller development footprints on there. The way the buildings work is you'll have parking on the first floor, and you'll have typically a little bathroom or a mudroom. Go up to the second floor, and you have your living room, dining room, kitchen. You have the third floor, and you're going to have a bathroom and two to three bedrooms. So there's salt parking. Move a little bit further. The area that's the kind of X-shaped building, that's Flowers by Roger, spoke with him on the phone, he's like, well, gives me options. So one thing I want to mention with the development concepts. When I put pen to paper and I show buildings being redeveloped, and I show new development, new investment, this is in no way against any of the businesses or the activities that are happening on-site. What we're talking about is trying to elevate the urban fabric and make sure that the connections that we're making to and from places are appropriate, and the buildings address the street in the right way. So looking back, and as I mentioned, you typically have a commercial core and then kind of a donut of parking. You'll notice, a lot of these projects are around that kind of donut of parking that you have right now. And then we go a little bit further to the east, and there's another version of the townhome product that faces the street and provides, again, more residents living downtown. So those really incorporate the private development side. You have developers coming to town wanting to do something. I think this is a way forward and something that you can use, again, as a marketing tool to go through the development community and say, hey, we have a vision for what we want to do, and it coincides with exactly where we want to go in this downtown. We get into the public projects, and streetscape was another big one. So we've broken things down, and we tried to be as simple as possible, but we have a primary and secondary streetscape. So the biggest bang for the buck is going to be along Central Avenue and Main Street. So those two, and Broad Street as well, are going to be probably the first ones that you want to focus on, and probably the highest level of quality and pedestrian amenities on those streets. Then you jump down to the second tier, which is the secondary streetscape. Again, it's somewhere that's focused on the pedestrian realm, but it just has less of those things. So there's going to be a cost savings with that as well. We took a look at gateways. How are people actually entering this district, and which routes are they taking? And oftentimes, when planners and landscape architects come up with gateways, they're going to come up with an actual gate with a sign that says, welcome to downtown. We thought this downtown was actually a really neat opportunity to try something a little bit different, so we went with a monument-style gateway feature. This relates back to the fact that this is a steel town, so this is, I'm not going to say Corten, but this is an A606 Wethering steel that will bend in place. It's a sheet steel, and then it weathers, basically gets a patina of rust on it, and there's very little maintenance that's included with that. So with that, we had a couple sites that made natural little diamond patterns, and we thought this would be a really fun way to welcome people into the downtown. We have bicycle amenities. This is something that came up a lot in the public meetings. So there's different ways that you can make sure that cyclists feel welcome on the streets. There's sharrows, there's traffic calming, there's dedicated bike paths. But the other piece of it as well is going to be the bike racks. And this is an additional branding opportunity that the city can take part in to make sure that, as people come into the downtown, they're where they are. But it reflects the overall branding character, I think, of, first of all, what you already have. You have the giant M, which I think is fantastic, but it's something that's pretty unique in terms of bike racks. And then we have street furnishings. So we went through several iterations of this, trying to pick out some of the most appropriate ways that this could be done, and people had a lot of opinions. In honesty, it was balanced between what we're calling traditional and art deco. And that's going to be the same both for street furnishings and for the lighting fixtures. So you can tell, what's important is that you have consistency across the downtown. You don't want mismatch. You want something that's high-quality, something that's going to last a long time. And we get to the streetlights. These are fun. Both of these are available. They might be special order, but this is one on option A, on the left-hand side, that was around, I believe, Ford Field in Detroit. So that one's kind of neat, because if you have a double fixture lamp, it basically spells out an M in the arms of the streetlight. The one on the right's a little bit more refined, it's an art deco look, but it's something that I think, across the board, people were pretty well split on. As you go for the banners, I think some had already been made up by the Visitors Bureau, and I think there's a really neat opportunity to use those as additional branding for the city. You can even use some of the unique aspects of the city, the fact that there was a ferret farm here, you have the steel industry, you have the paper industry, you have the canal, you have, there's one I was going to mention. It escapes me at the moment, but it could be a really fun opportunity to actually place those around where those things were occurring. So that outlines some of the pretty pictures of the projects. Again, gives some people some projects to work on and some things to bite into. And the second part is going to be the policy framework, and I am not going to put that on screen, but just understand that, again, goal, objective, strategy, and there's actions that are incorporated into those as well, and that's kind of the last part of it, in addition to the development toolbox. So when this is all said and done with, we had our second public meeting, and we turned this over to the public and asked, you know, what do you think? And I can tell you that across the board, I think the response was extremely positive. A lot of the people liked what they saw. They were given copies of both the projects that you're seeing today and also the plan framework, given the opportunity to go through and highlight things that they might change, and some edits have been made from that public meeting as well. So with that, I will say that it's been a lot of fun working in this community. I think you guys have a fantastic, fantastic downtown. I think it needs to be protected. You've got to make sure that the buildings that are here are not allowed to deteriorate, you're not allowed to get improvements that are not appropriate for a building of that age. But I think that there's a tremendous amount of potential, and I'm very pleased, very fortunate that I had the opportunity to work here. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Robbins?
Appreciate the information. Very helpful, very thorough process, and I think we need to probably consider some next steps. Doug and I talked briefly about this thing last week, we were going to look at the agenda. Do other cities typically host public forums and other discussion-type opportunities now that the plans kind of colust around?
They can, and it depends on the community. It depends on the reaction of the community. So if, let's say, for instance, I'm not, this won't be the case, but if for some reason people are extremely angry, there's always the opportunity to come back and try and explain in better detail what it is that would be recommended. It really depends, I think, on where you guys want to go with it. So sometimes this gets passed, and this is kind of the last portion. I know that you are given the opportunity to really read through this, which is fantastic. I hope you all do, and Mallory's contact information, which she can email directly to me, and we can get anything incorporated that this council would see fit.
Good. Mr. Atkins?
Tonight's was just an overview, a chance to lay it out to the public for the first time. You've got a hard copy of the draft now. We'd like to move it along, but we're not under any particular timeframe. We'd like you to take your time, carefully consider it, ask a lot of questions, decide what, if any, other public inputs you'd like. And somewhere down the road, I do want to ask you at some point, is this something you want to adopt, either in whole or in part as a policy? As you know, we're putting together the entire city master plans we go through this year, and what part of this, if any, would you like to adopt as part of this overall city master plan? Because then, again, not only will we say, okay, this is now what we want for downtown, the second question is, and how does that fit into our other objectives? Okay, we like this, we love the look, we love the idea, we love the things. How does it fit in with economic development? How's it fit in with infrastructure? How does it fit in with some of the other things we're going to be looking at throughout the year so that, again, as we get ready to budget for '18, I can look and say, well, they love these concepts, but we're only going to put, you know, 8% of our budget towards this, the rest of it's going to go for infrastructure. Okay, well, then, looking at this and the short-term goals, how do we start packaging this in a way that makes sense to move it forward? That's the style of what we'll be doing. Again, we're not in any particular timeframe, but we would like you to start giving some thought, fairly deep thought, to reading, asking questions. Is this something you believe in? Are there things either, you know, that we want to carve out of it as a group, that we love the plan, but we don't like, you know, a certain thing on Broad Street? We don't want to do that. That's fine. We can either change the plan to take it out completely or adopt it, taking that out, you know, leaving it as it is, but saying, you know, for our policy, we're not going to do this certain piece of it that we're going to stay away from. So that's what we wanted to do tonight. I've thrown a lot at you tonight with all the different things going on, but a lot of cool things going on in the city. So I appreciate your patience. I know we're an hour and a half into it. Fortunately, we've got a light legislative agenda, so we'll try to get you through it. But thank you for your time and attention tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If it's okay with council, I was going to suggest we just move through the rest of the agenda rather than take a break. If that's okay?
Okay.
With that, Ms. Gank, we can move to our consent agenda, please.
For your consideration this evening, we have the approval of the City Council minutes from December 20th, 2016, and January 3rd, 2017, to receive and file an oath of office for Joseph Phillips, to confirm personnel appointments for Ethan Clark, John Laswell, Bryce Nartker, and David Kaiser, firefighter, EMTs, Department of Public Safety, Division of Fire, and Stephen Crank, patrol officer, Department of Public Safety, Division of Police, and to approve a contract with Trank U.S. Incorporated of Cincinnati, Ohio, in the amount of $76,763 to rebuild one of the chillers located in the Middletown City Building.
All right. We have a motion for the approval of the issued actions as listed on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or comments? Ms. Gank, we call a roll, please.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
All right, we have one motion out this evening.
To authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services contract with CH2M to prepare construction plans to upgrade the Kensington Pump Station.
Okay. Ms. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. The city's water system was analyzed, and with the idea of taking on the Middletown Energy Center as it comes online approximately in 2018, we're going to need upgrades at the Kensington Pump Station. We have put out a request for qualifications. CH2M gave the most comprehensive proposal for the FOST, and staff is recommending approval of the contract.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Atkins? All right. You will entertain a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services contract with CH2M for construction plans to the upgrade of the Kensington Pump Station.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Gank, we call a roll, please.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to our council comments this evening. We'll start with Mr. Picard.
Thank you, Mayor. No comments.
Mr. Bohannon?
No comments, sir.
Mr. Moon?
Nothing this evening.
All right. Ms. Bronston?
Wow.
Boom, boom, boom.
Yeah, that was fast. We had a lot of activity with the MLK weekend this weekend. As a matter of fact, there was a kickoff on Saturday with the oratoricals at the Triple Moon. We did have an acumenical service on Sunday at the New Life Baptist Church where our own police chief was honored with the Drum Major Award. And some of the other young men in the city of Middletown who have turned their lives around and is in support of, you know, the law now, that used to be people that opposed the law. So we had a lot of congratulations going on on Sunday, a lot of great music. I know our city manager has talked about changing the climate of the city and especially with cultures, and we had a representation of many of the cultures, ethnic cultures here in the city. We had four events on Monday, yesterday, and the mayor and I attended breakfast. We marched with our city manager and other council people and people in the community. We did go to the atrium, where a wonderful program was held there, and then we ended up last night at the library with Kip Moore and a rendition for MLK and a lot of music. So very pleasurable weekend, and I like to say those things because a lot of things are happening here. And so those are my comments. We have a lot of things coming up, but those are the weekend.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention a couple things. One, I want to compliment Jerry Lewis, and they hosted a ladies' night out. I had the privilege of participating in at the Windermere Friday night, brought about 200 and some ladies downtown to get dressed up and have a good time and share some stories. I just played a small part in it, but it was pretty impressive to see that crowd there and a good time. And then at our Board of Health meeting this past week, Jackie updated us, I know they had a meeting on Friday here, but began to really dive into some of the infant mortality issues that we're facing here in Ohio and southwest Ohio. So in addition to our heroin issue, I know Jackie's taking that up to work on that and address that. So just want to look, council, that's on the radar at least and being addressed. And with that, we can move to our legislation this evening. Ms. Cohen?
Thank you, sir. For beginning, we have three items that are asked to consider emergency this evening. I asked for a motion to waive the charter provisions regarding two readings and immediate enactment for Resolution R. 2017-02, Resolution R. 2017-03, and Ordinance 2017-01.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the charter that requires two readings on two separate days for the following resolutions and ordinances, R. 2017-02, R. 2017-03, and O. 2017-01, and declare them emergency measures.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Gank, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
First matter will be Resolution R. 2017-02, a resolution requesting the auditor of Butler County to advance to the treasurer of the city of Middletown, Ohio, taxes assessed and collected for and on behalf of the city of Middletown, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. Butler County collects property taxes on behalf of the city. Each year, those collections are paid to the city in two installments. The first one comes in February. The city has the option to pass a resolution requesting advanced payment of property taxes, which allows us to get that money sooner. This is a resolution that we generally pass each year, and it's ready for your adoption tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Ms. Atkins? All right, Ms. Gank, we call a roll, please.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Next matter is Resolution R. 2017-03, a resolution declaring it necessary to renew a tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation for the purpose to supplement the general fund for the purpose of making appropriations for providing or maintaining senior citizen services and/or facilities as set forth in Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705-19, subsection Y, and determining to proceed to submit the question of renewing such tax to the electors of the city of Middletown, Ohio, at the election on May 2nd, 2017, in accordance with Section 5705.19Y of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring it an emergency.
Okay, do we motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you.